He had his gun, so he just swung it open.
I started to notice that, you know, the atmosphere feels a little bit weird.
First thing he seen was this six and a half foot tall, broad shoulder, dark hair, death rite kill mouth.
We hadn't talked to her about like life and death and what any of that means. She's three years old, you know?
So we turned around, suddenly there's a whole tree falling across the road.
And she was describing to us that, you know, there was a deceased person that she could, she could see visually.
You're listening to Cryptid Clues, where we tackle the ever-expanding history and mystery of monsters and supernatural madness every Monday. You can find us at cryptidclues.ca for more information, or even check out exclusive content and support us at patreon.com/cryptidclues. Hello, everybody. Welcome back to another episode of Cryptid Clues. Today, we're diving back into our follow-up episode regarding the UAP conference that took place back on July 26, 2023. If you haven't listened in yet, our part one's already on our feeds, so check that out and tune back in to this episode. Very quickly, though, we have just released two episodes that dropped earlier this month, one focusing on Dogman encounters, and the other, which released just last week, dives into the Arkansas's Bigfoot. Now, let's get into this.
So, following up on our three witness opening statements that we did prior in our part one, David Gresh, Ryan Graves, and David Fravor, the questions begin flowing in at this point. The chairman, Mr. Grothman, inquires if the witnesses can think of any reason why UAPs have not been made public. Mr. Gresh takes the mic and replies with, and I quote, "Acknowledging a vulnerability." That basically means that we don't want to own up to something that is better than us. That's how I interpret that, and I feel like it's very spot on. It's just kind of human nature.
Yeah, you know, saying that you're acknowledging a vulnerability can mean a lot of things, I suppose. It could also mean that, you know, there's something that they want to talk about that they can't discuss because otherwise it would blow the lid on something else.
Mm-hmm. It's totally true. Being a vulnerability, I guess you don't want to expose any weaknesses to other countries as well, or terrorists, anything like that, really, like, which it would. So, Mr. Grothman counters that statement with UAPs from over 20 years ago and why that information that's dated hasn't been made public yet. But again, it's met with the, like, unless it's relating to a specific vulnerability in national security, and that's something that I took as related to something public, it's kept secret. So, there's, I mean, these sightings and things that have been recovered throughout this congressional hearing, they get loosely dated in the past century, but it's being that old, still not of, uh, not weighted enough to be made into the public eye, I guess, is what they're, they're trying to disclose.
Mm-hmm. Unless they're being fairly honest and they actually don't know what half these things are or what's going on, and they go, well, we got a video of a dot zipping across the screen. We don't know what to make of it. It's, are we comfortable sharing that? Because we don't know what it is?
Well, that's true, and I think a lot of it, a lot of it just gets swept under the rug. And how, like, how can you approach that? And how can you reveal that? I mean, you, you can't say alien. You necessarily might not even be able to say UFO or UAP. It's, it's just something moving around. But then when you have multiple references and multiple sources picking it up on radar, then I think that's when that comes into this UAP realm, because you have these different classifications and backing it up. So, Mr. Grothman then asks, and I quote, "Based on any of your experiences and observations, do you believe UAPs pose a potential threat to our national security?" David Fravor starts off with, and I quote, "Yes, and here's why. The technology we faced was far superior to anything we had, and you could put that anywhere if you had one. You captured one, you reverse engineered it, you got it to work. You're talking something that can go into space, go someplace, and drop down in a matter of seconds and do whatever it wants and leave, and there's nothing we can do about it. Nothing." End quote. Ryan Graves, and I quote, "What I would also like to add from a commercial aviation and military aviation perspective, we deal with uncertainty in our operating space as a matter of professional actions. Identifying friend from foe is very important to us. So when we have unidentified targets and we continue to ignore those due to a stigma or fear for what it could be, that's an opening that our adversaries can take advantage of." End quote. Goes kind of hand in hand with what we were talking about before, but it's absolutely true, and it's met with so much more stigma. And I have a quote that I'm gonna touch upon later in this where Graves actually pinpoints his percentage, which, yeah, is later. Mr. Grothman, and I quote, "What steps should we take to better understand and respond to UAP encounters in the interest of national security?" And Ryan Graves follows up with, and I quote, "There needs to be a location where this information is centralized for processing, and there needs to be a two-way communication loop so the operators on the front end have the feedback and can get the best practices on how to process information, what to do and to assure that their reporting is being listened to. Right now, there's not a lot of back and forth." End quote. Couldn't agree more, and I'd love to have a centralized, like a public domain area that you can access and, it has to be screened if you're submitting, but it would be very nice to have a reliable source that you can really pull from and, yeah, put towards your own sightings or, or something like that, and maybe that, I'm not saying Cryptic Clues is like that, but I like to think Cryptic Clues is a pretty good archive of relative rookie information that you could look to if you have questions.
If you want to listen to some lengthy episodes, absolutely. At the same time, imagine if there was a website or something, or like a public forum, where you could just go post something, and everyone got to see it. But you have to screen it first. Obviously, the government's gonna get involved with that. If there's anything that threatens national security, they don't want people just uploading legit UAP UFO videos willy-nilly, or otherwise we just put into the Facebook realm where everything's dismissed as a hoax. So, if you were to post something and share it like that, I feel like you wouldn't actually see your post get published for months. And if it did get published, it would either be heavily, heavily edited, a fragment of what you wanted to submit, changed in some way, or simply not actually show up if you posted something legit and the truth hadn't fully come out yet.
Are you saying this, like, you see something and you pull your iPhone out and you record it and you go to post it, and it gets revised that way? Or you are a part of the military, you're a fighter pilot, you record something and you take that footage and want to post it, and that gets tweaked?
Either way, whether you're just a citizen or you're in the military, if you're in the army, you find something and you want to do that, it's gonna be, it's also your job on the line for revealing that kind of thing, I guess.
That's very, very true. Career threatening is something that they seem to be very much discussing in this congressional hearing as well. Career in the government is very important to a lot of people.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more of envisioning this as something like that anyone can access, but obviously what they're discussing for a centralized communication, two-way loop kind of a deal is something that's more government-based, obviously, or internalized that the public gets to see parts of after, but that's, that's not what I want to see.
Yeah, absolutely. At this point, the floor basically opened up to other members of Congress to start asking questions. And Ryan Graves gives great detail on the reporting system for both commercial and military pilots not being able to report these encounters. He notes that since his observations back in 2014, after upgrading their radar systems, even after his posting there ended, his station, next-generation pilots are still reporting seeing these things on the eastern seaboard from 2019 to our present year. It's so frequent that it's become part of flight briefings, but commercial pilots that have reached out to Ryan Graves have stated that they do not have any proper method of filing or reporting these events they witnessed while flying. This is something we touched upon in part one. Again, mentioning this here, I'll reiterate, this needs to be seriously taken into consideration. When you board a plane, you need to be made aware of all the risks, and UAPs are an absolute flight risk. You get into that car knowing that there's other drivers, knowing that a kid could run onto the street, animals, wildlife. You have signs saying that it's a deer crossing, so many things. But you're getting onto a plane and you're not thinking that a UAP is gonna be an issue, but what, there are missing flights, but what if by, there's always a first. What if that one first-time instant scenario is your Boeing plane is flying and a UAP shoots down 40,000 feet and just decimates your plane? It's probably not gonna happen, but...
I, yeah, I guess devil's advocate for this, but they always say that flying is safer than driving. If you're on a plane, it's safer than driving to your location. So if it's safer to be in a plane, the risks are generally pretty low, and yes, there are significantly less flights than there are cars. So I guess there's a percentage to take into account for a proper statistic, but based on what they tell us, it's kind of like, if you were to hop in a car and you had to be given all the warnings if someone else is the driver, you wouldn't go through the list of, oh, we could hit a deer, we could hit a moose, we could hit a mouse, we could hit a squirrel that gets caught up in the fender and gets whipped around the road. Like, that's not gonna be told to you. So if you're on a plane, obviously the major risk is failure in the engine, on the plane, propeller, or something like that. It could crash. People are aware of those risks. They might mention some of those safety risks, but on a much smaller scale, planes going missing are generally uncommon. It does happen, and you do hear about it because of how uncommon it really is. It's news versus a car crash is only a local news story, right? But for a plane to be attacked by UAP or UFO or something happens thereof, like, I don't think that's something that they would make you aware of because of how, obviously, how the public feels about that information. This is all still coming out. They don't really truly believe in it all the way yet. But also, it's just so unlikely to happen.
Yeah, well said. Let me pose this to you then. How do you feel about comparisons between commercial and military pilots? Where military pilots have the tech to scan these things far out. They may not even need to visually see them, but they know that they're there based on their radar systems and the tech that they have. Whereas commercial pilots don't necessarily have that, and it's a lot more close proximity, probably a lot more of like a visual confirmation that they're seeing something?
I think that's also based on how our countries feel about seeing maybe a military fighter jet in their airspace versus a commercial airliner that's just delivering international people that all have their passports. You're not gonna see a plane flying from America over to Europe getting shot down because it's a suspicious flight. If you see a US jet flying over to Europe and it's unannounced, obviously, they're gonna have some concerns. So you want to have radar, you want to have that detection on a military unit to detect enemies, to detect other countries, rather than a commercial flight where you go, hey, you know what? I'm basically a big white flag of retreat, like, what's whatever. I'm just here delivering innocent people. No one's gonna harm us. Otherwise, that would be very malicious terrorism, right?
Yeah, for sure it would be.
Now, taking, obviously taking UAPs, UFOs, all that good stuff into account, yeah, it'd be nice for pilots to have some warning if they are to come out and say, hey, these things are very dangerous. You do want to be aware of them. It's unlikely that you're gonna be attacked, but as time goes on, maybe something's gonna happen. Then you'd want to see these commercial airliners have some kind of a system for detection so that the people on board feel like they're gonna be more prepared and safer. But also, you also have to think too that this technology is so many years ahead of us? What are we gonna do to stop it?
Yeah, it's true. I mean, at this point, nothing. Just watch. It's worth noting as well that Mr. Graves confirms that it's not just the eastern seaboard that I mentioned before, but objects have been detected where all Navy operations are being conducted across the world, specifically seeing, and I quote, "Dark gray or black cubes inside of a clear sphere, with the apex and tips of the cube are touching inside the sphere, and these sightings on the eastern seaboard are still occurring." End quote. I was trying to envision what that might look like, and it just, to me, it's like a bubble with like a black cube inside is what I picture.
Why does that sound like something you would see in Assassin's Creed when you're like entering?
In the Animus, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's like something that you would just see floating around. That's what I'm picturing.
Yeah, totally, like a helix of some kind or something. It's very, very weird, but no propulsion system, no wings, nothing like that, nothing attaching it to the ground. It's just a self-contained operating device, so...
Obviously, these things work in such a way that we have, we have no idea how they function, because that's probably some kind of offshoot where quantum physics are involved, stuff that is very hard for humans to understand. Actually, just not to take us too much off course here, we'll resume in a second, but talking about UFOs just made me remember this one video that I just watched where a guy was trying to explain how apparently he thinks he was told by an alien or something about how UFO propulsion works, how they go so fast, how they can travel vast distances, and they have the physics and the math to be able to look at time and space and distance as if it was, you're measuring it with a ruler, and they're able to just physically grow their units of measurement. So, hey, you know what? If this is 60 feet away because we're measuring it with a device that shows proper 12-inch-sized foots, what if we just measured it with a device where inches are actually much bigger? What if we just pretend that an inch is actually 20 miles? And then we use these new units and these new scales, and we just have a really massive ruler that now makes the distance from Mars to Earth 12 inches? And somehow, the, these mathematics work to take this travel into account, into like, I don't know, how they fold it into a dimension or something, but basically, it calculates that speed and that distance to make it act as if you're only traveling a foot, even though you're really traveling a great distance in our perspective, in a human mind.
That would be a game changer in math class.
I'd be out. I'd quit.
This isn't a foot. This is, uh, like six inches, actually, like...
It's like when you get into math and they're talking about, like, imaginary numbers. Oh, so, you know, it's 12 inches to a foot, but unless we're talking about imaginary distance.
Yeah, exactly. In all seriousness, I think that's actually like really, really a fantastic concept. I don't know how you would manifest that into a physical dimensional application, though.
Oh, I mean, it goes into, again, quantum physics, which is just stupid to explain. You have to look at, you have to understand the math and the numbers, and there's stuff that I don't understand in there. So, to be told verbally how it works is like someone talking techno-jerbil to their grandpa. It's like, it's not gonna be, you have to put it into layman's terms, and unfortunately, there's no way to describe that in layman's terms, just the way I did, which sounds like science fiction.
It's incredible. It really, really is. But, I mean, is he the only one reporting that? I mean, lots of people report that they have communed with extraterrestrials and I'm not saying that this person's cracked the code and figured it out, but that's why we need some kind of setup to properly two-way connect information and just start seeding through the, the inputs and just kind of like formulate a reliable domain source.
Yeah, and of course, the only way to move on from that would be reverse engineering. I'll let you resume now, Taylor.
Yeah. So, Mr. Gresh, and I quote, "Do you believe that our government is in possession of UAPs?" And this is again, Mr. Chairman Grothman stating this, or pitching it. Mr. Gresh replies, "Absolutely, based on interviewing over 40 witnesses over four years." Mr. Gresh also states that he has the locations, but of course, that's not revealed. There is a lot of, uh, no, I can't say it in an open, open setting. I can speak to it in a private setting.
Yeah, that, that really tripped me out.
It does, and then it just makes me think, well, it's gotta be real then, obviously. It's not, uh, it's not a no. It has to be some kind of truth to it.
Unless it's a cover-up, and they said, oh, if you don't know the answer to something, just say you can't talk about it in a public setting.
That's true. Yeah, just to derail all the conspiracy theorists out there. Mr. Burchett asks, "Do you have any personal knowledge of people who have been harmed or injured in efforts to cover up or conceal these extraterrestrial technologies?" Mr. Gresh responds, "Yes, personally." They even asked if people have been murdered, and he denied being able to answer confidently. It's also confirmed by Mr. Gresh that he at one point was in fear of his life for revealing this information. They then discussed that the G-forces involved with some of these craft moving, particularly the Tic-Tac footage, from all three witnesses, uh, would be powerful enough that a human could not withstand it, and again, referring to the G-forces, going from like Mach zero and just flooring it. The human body would just, this can't handle that kind of acceleration. I imagine you would need some kind of technology inside to... What would be the proper kind of explanation for that? I don't want to say it's like going deep down in the ocean, having a pressurized apparatus to kind of contain you, but something technologically speaking, not like anti-gravity, but something that would just displace you.
Something that would like safely move the atmosphere at the same speed as you, so you feel as if you're not moving at all, and there's no effect in your body?
Like if you're in a car and you're driving and a bug outside, obviously can't do 80 miles an hour down the highway, but a bug flies into your vehicle and you're driving, that bug isn't immediately smashing into the windshield, is it? Or is it just kind of, it's buzzing around in your car as you're moving? Does that make sense?
There's a lot of forces to take into account for that.
It's a loose explanation.
I mean, we could go drive a moving van down the road and I'll jump in the back and see if I hit the door.
Yeah, yeah. We'll do that. We'll try with all different shapes and sized creatures. We'll get some bugs in there and then maybe a bigger animal too. No, I'm kidding.
Well, it's like the, the elevator thing. So if you're in an elevator that's going down and you jump, it's extremely unsafe. And if you're in an elevator that's falling, like dramatically, you're told to like lay on your, lay down, spread everything out. So when the impact hits, there's less of you to be thrust upwards and smashed back down onto the ground. You're still probably gonna get severely hurt, but it's not like you're falling so quickly now. It's, you're still being affected by the moving object even though you're inside of it.
That's true.
So when you're driving down the road and there's a bug in the car, it is affected. It's just a matter of not having wind and other forces hitting it because it's inside your vehicle.
That's right. Yeah, absolutely. So maybe that's what they're kind of semi-relying on to a degree. I believe Mr. Fravor was talking about how with the Tic-Tac video, they were seeing certain, um, again, it's through their radar scans, apparatuses they're using and such, and they could see two little things ticking out of the bottom. And I think he was alluding to a landing gear of some kind or whatnot, but...
I'm still distracted by the moving topic. Sorry, I'm thinking now, like, when you like floor it in a car, you can't reach forward. You wanna play a prank on somebody, you like put like a $20 bill on the dash and then just floor it and go as quick as you can, and they can't reach it, right?
Yeah.
We just typically don't drive fast enough for it to affect our, our sense when we're inside the vehicle without wind hitting us. Our human body can go through that much force.
Yeah, that's true.
So if you have a bug in the car, it can fly faster than that force. It's, it just isn't very, very noticeable.
That's fair. Do you know?
I just wanted to sound like less of an idiot, so I wanted to add on to that. Sorry.
No, that's totally okay. Uh, I'm curious, though, how much G-force a human can actually withstand?
I know how much G-fuel a human can withstand because I've been drinking so much of it today.
We're not affiliated, but I love that. That's a great transition. I guess most gravitational accelerators, most of us can withstand up to a four or six Gs. Fighter pilots can manage up to about nine Gs for a second or two. Oh my goodness. Um, yeah, that's insanity. Holy smokes. So what is the conversion? What is nine Gs to miles per hour? Uh, holy smokes. No way is that true. I'm learning on the fly here. Nine Gs is equal to 88 meters. I'm the fly in the car. Nine Gs of acceleration is equal to 88 meters per second per second. That is 197 miles per hour per second. Unbelievable. So that is what pilots can reach up to. And it seems like that's kind of like the maximum before I imagine they pass out hitting that nine G mark. 197 miles per second per, uh, per second. I mean, that's from here to Vancouver in...
Well, yeah, for us Canadians, I guess that's, uh, one G is 35 kilometers. That's, yeah.
Sorry, I thought you were gonna fall off with something else.
Well, no, I can't do the rest of the math in my head that quickly. You said nine Gs? That's 315 kilometers per hour.
Oh my gosh. Yeah, that's pretty frickin' impressive. So for something like this to just be, let's just say like triple that, quadruple that, I mean, going from zero up to quadruple that speed, it's, that's incredible. I'm...
Yeah, you'd feel like the bugs when they hit your windshield in the outside.
Bugs hitting, yeah, you'd be the bug on the outside, not on the inside.
The last thing to go through your mind would be your butt.
Yeah. So, moving on from this, Mr. Gresh also confirms he believes that advanced tech space has unsanctioned advanced programs. Unsanctioned means basically with authority or consent above congressional oversight. These programs get funding through misappropriation of funds, and that US corporations are overcharging for their products to distribute funds to these programs. So that could be, I don't put it past the government, but I kind of would look at the government as aware, but it's more or less private corporations that are doing this. So you have, I'm not saying that this is at all real, but I'm using them as an example. Lockheed Martin, let's say they're gonna sell an F-35 to the American government for $100 billion. And the net official retail price of a F-35, let's say, is 500 million. While the other billions of dollars that the Lockheed Martin is banking on, they're going to loosely misappropriate that and channel some of it into their special R and D project, which is reverse engineering. That's how I interpret what Mr. Gresh was kind of speaking to.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Do you have any thoughts on any of that or so far?
No, no, continue on. I think we're just getting to the interesting part in that topic.
So, Mr. Mr. Gresh claims most object recoveries predate many of the modern-day organizations and agencies, which makes sense. A lot of things have been happening for hundreds of years.
Yeah, Roswell even is before a lot of technology came about.
Yeah, absolutely. Especially when you take into account that these sightings and these recoveries probably predate the American government to a point. I mean, the American government, what, 1800s? I'm sure we have things that go beyond that. Of course, record-keeping may not be that great.
Well, that's when we get to those medieval paintings where you see UFOs in the sky.
Correct. That's very true.
That's where we get to even just paintings of like Jesus and stuff, where you see some kind of light in the sky, some kind of thing where it's like, well, what's that doing there?
Absolutely. This blew my mind when they spoke to this. The Pentagon loses around $1 billion a year. According to Mr. Burchett, they also don't account for 60% of their assets, just unaccounted for. And they, they make, they poke fun at this in the conference because if you or me lost a little bit of money and didn't file it on our taxes, or we didn't account for, uh, like a 0.001% of our assets when our tax filings or anything like that, we can be fined. There's jail time. Like, the consequences are exponentially serious. That is a billion taxpayer dollars just gone with over 60%. I just can't fathom that. Unbelievable.
That's because they value the Pentagon, whereas you or me, it's like, well, we can make do without this, so let's just, uh, make sure they have to do all their taxes right.
Yeah.
It's so taxing.
There you go. I understand that Mr. Burchett was alluding to the previous statement of, uh, misappropriation of funds and, and funding and what sorts, but, uh, moving on.
Well, that was immediately where my mind went too, is they're losing 60% of their assets or whatever for being unaccounted for, and obviously those funds are going into something else. Obviously, those funds, if we're looking at this topic, seemingly going into maybe reverse engineering, UAP subject research, that kind of stuff.
I personally don't think there's enough instigation and inquiry from the general public, and why should there be? We're so occupied with our lives. We're busy. We're trying to pay our own taxes. We can't worry about a billion dollars taxpayers.
Look at this conference that happened anyways. So many people are so busy with their lives, people shrugged. Oh, yeah, they talked about aliens officially for once. Okay, and everyone went back to work the next day.
Absolutely. It's a shame. You look like you're gonna say something.
I'm trying to stifle the yawn for the microphone.
So, moving on from that, Mr. Burlison asks Mr. Gresh, and I quote, "Has any of the activity been aggressive, being hostile in your reports?" Mr. Gresh responds with, and I quote, "I know of multiple colleagues of mine that got physically injured and the activity," interruption from Mr. Burlison, "by UAPs or by people within the federal government?" Gresh responds with, "Both." Go for it.
Yeah, no, that, that makes me think of like Men in Black right there.
Totally does. Mr. Burlinson, and I quote, "So there has been a activity by alien or non-human technology and/or beings that have caused harm to humans." Mr. Gresh responds with, and I quote, "What I personally witnessed myself and my wife was very disturbing." End quote. I think, and my mind goes, it's probably extreme, but I'm thinking, okay, are people melting as they like?
Yeah.
Touch these things? Like, what is going on? Then obviously, Mr. Gresh implies too, the severity of this, when you have unknown variables stacked with unknown variables as you're working on it, it's gonna have very dire consequences.
You want to know what I thought when I saw that sentence? I thought of the, like, the Ark of the Covenant, where they, like, they touch it, and like, that was a... Where they like, they touch it and like that was, that was it, right? Sorry, carry on, carry on. I was distracted with that. I'll, I'll call back to that later on.
It's all good. No, I think, I think that's a very, very valid point to bring up. It's just unknowns and unknowns. Mr. Gruj claims most object recoveries, uh, which I already read that. Vandenberg Air Force Base. Now, have you heard of this event that took place?
Re- refresh me here.
So this was explained by Mr. Graves and this took place in two thousand and three. Uh, and I quote, in the two thousand and three timeframe, a large group of Boeing contractors were operating near one of the launch facilities at Vandenberg Air Force Base. When they observed a very large hundred yard sighted red square approach the base from the ocean and hover at low altitude over one of the launch facilities. The object remained for about forty-five seconds or so before darting off over the mountains. There was a similar event within twenty-four hours later in the evening. This was a morning event, I believe eight forty-five in the morning. Later in the evening post sunset, there were reports of other sightings on base, including some aggressive behaviors. These objects were approaching some of the security guards at rapid speeds before darting off. And this is information that was received through one of the witnesses that have approached me at Americans for Safe Aerospace, end quote. There were no sketches that were done, but Graves stated that the object was going to be the size of a football field.
Right. You were telling me about that. The, the size of that object is just intense to think about. That's absolutely insane.
Just to go in and station itself for a brief time, but still intimidating over the launch facilities at your air force base? I mean, come on. You're gonna think it's a threat.
And this object, this thing that was this huge, that's what was darting at security guards and stuff?
They did not confirm that. It just, they confirmed that they were other unidentified objects. I don't believe that they were the football field sightings, but things that were
Cause that would be, that would be awfully scary to see something that huge just lurch at you.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of like, you know, like you're, you're walking through a hallway and somebody's like trying to like size you up and they do like the shoulder like twitch forward to scare you as you go by.
Just to, yeah, freak you out a little bit. Now, I mentioned this earlier. Mr. Graves claims that his personal estimate is that ninety-five percent of pilots do not report their UAP encounters and five percent do. So we can look into the fact that what we've talked about and things that are public knowledge, we can allot that into the five percent that reports. There's a plethora of stuff that is not put out there. And again, like we've talked about, the stigma that's attached to it. The fear of career and it's so many things in, in place that really demotivate you to want to talk about this stuff.
And if you think about the five percent as well as having these kinds of encounters where you see something like a Tic Tac, you see radar stuff, you see a dot in the sky go by your plane as you're piloting it. Those are the kind of events where even if there is a little bit of stigma, not enough of something happened to make it detrimental to tell everybody about. Now you take that into account as this is the reports we're getting in the five percent. What are the other ninety-five percent? Are they sightings that are less important? Where somebody maybe saw something and they had to triple guess themselves and go, ah, it was nothing. It was just in the corner of my eye. Or are we also thinking that there's now reports that are, that these pilots had something absolutely insane happen? Their plane was abducted. They were put on a UFO. They talked to aliens. They went into another world for a year and then were teleported back to their time and space, flying the plane and time like some random science fiction event. You think there's reports that are just so out of left field that are a part of that ninety-five percent and that's why we're not hearing them? Or do you think it's information that's less important than the five percent?
I think it's less important. I feel like anything that is that very flamboyant extravagant event that would occur, I feel like that probably does get out there, but it's just one of those like loosey goosey things that people just it just gets disregarded. It's the thing that you see on.
Uh, think about the people that have their reports where it's like, hey, I'm in contact with an alien species and they talk to me, this star child. Think about something like that. The immediate dismissal that the public has when you get into an in-depth story about something absolutely crazy sounding right off the top of the bat. If you're a pilot and something insane like that happens to you, but if it was like you or me, honestly, I wouldn't share something like that. If, if I could look at it from a third person's perspective and I go, I sound insane, I would not talk about it. But boil that thing back down into a UFO flying by in the sky. Okay, I'll talk about that.
Well, it's, i- it's a level of like just disbelief, the right term for that, but uh, like seeing something unknown fly by your, your aircraft. There's a level of plausibility attached to that, whereas you know, you're, you're, you're in direct contact with them. You're right. Like it's, it's not as, you're not gonna wanna talk about that.
I see. So like you're kind of saying, if you saw like a light in the sky zip by and you wanted to talk to anyone about it, you could be like, yeah, I saw this. I think it was a UFO sighting, but it could also have just been a shooting star.
There's a level of, uh, yeah, yeah, there's, there's a level of plausible deniability, I guess, or like a, a logistical thinking that it could be something else that is accepted within society. I think you can confidently speak to that to people out in the public because it's nothing serious where you, you start saying alien. And I think that's the thing with the conference because if they start sharing the in-depth things in this, in this congressional hearing, like, yeah, we have alien bodies, they're green, they're short, they're seven feet tall, or they got four eyes, whatever you call it. Like I think that people are gonna dismiss it because that just starts to trigger that automatic response where people do, oh no, it's bullshit. It's whatever. I think that's the thing where these pilots necessarily, if they see that stuff, they don't talk about it. But as they keep it just enough, um, they, they got one hand still holding on to that realism cup and that logistics cup where they can talk about how they've seen things flying. They're not saying aliens, they're saying non-human biologics, like they're very particular with their words. It could all be a derailment. It could all be just a, a big conundrum to kind of send people down a different rabbit hole than they want. But I think that that helps bridge people into believing it a little bit more. Cause like I said, you, you, you mentioned alien and people are gonna cut you off. It's, and I see that with my friends, like I mentioned Bigfoot. And I feel like there is a, a slight disconnect. So.
Yep.
Yeah. So moving on from here, is another really, really great point that was brought up. Uh, Mr. Fravor states that the US government wouldn't test new weaponry or vehicles next to multimillion dollar military equipment like jets without alerting the members of the base. Uh, and instead, why not just use their test ranges that they, they've constructed for these things? Why would they launch and not brief American Air Force pilots into American airspace and just send in these types of devices? And again, you could say maybe it's another country, but why would they send them in there to fly around and compromise? Uh, these American pilots, the American pilots shouldn't know about this in advance, right?
They don't want that information to get leaked as if, oh, you know, our military has this technology. We're so much better. Now we have this crazy weaponry. Versus you just test it randomly and silently without your own military knowing about it? Now you can really hold on to that for the, the crazy need to use it. Even your own military doesn't know you have it.
Right. So you're not, you're not, it goes hand in hand with like, you're not attacking them. You're just operating. And again, over the ocean, great place to do things where you don't want people to really see.
Yeah.
Mr. Fravor actually talked more about that where the objects in the Tic Tacs were flying around, there were the water swells down below. And they kind of joked about how at the time when they were flying, that maybe whatever is in the air is communicating with what's down below and creating like the water swells. Because he ended up saying that after things simmered down, whatever was in the water was no longer there. So there was something beneath the surface creating a swell water, which is
It's those crazy smart dolphins. They've actually got this kind of technology. They're gonna conquer the surface next.
Frickin' dolphins, yeah. So Mr. Gruj, obviously we talked about this because we got super excited about this, but he confirms in some craft recoveries that non-human biologics were recovered. We spoke to that already.
I love that he interrupted too and it was like, hey, you know, they're not referred to, we're not gonna talk about aliens or anything like that. These are non-human biolot, these are non-human entities. These are non-human biologics. And that was the term that was used.
But still, yeah, absolutely. Still a biological entity of some sort. And he alludes in this point too, I believe, at extratera, um, sorry, interdimensional. Uh, and brings the craft into that too, so.
And this is where it really tripped me up was during this conversation, one of the questions that kind of got thrown in there with like other questions was, where are they from? And if you listen closely during that, the answer is from here.
Yeah.
So he's not saying that these non-human biologics are from outer space. They're from other planets. They're from here, whatever that means.
And again, not non-human. So how, how would you interpret that?
If you wanted to take it literally, we could look at ocean UFOs and say, well, maybe it's a weird species from the ocean. If you wanted to take it a little less literally, everything's in our dimension. Everything's, there's other dimensions and a lot of stuff intertwined. So there, everything's technically from here. If you have an alien-ish species coming from another plane of our reality, you could say they're from here. If it's something spiritual, you're gonna say that it's from here because then depending on your theories or your beliefs, this is all there is.
That's really, really well said, actually. I did not realize that there were so many different avenues that could fit into that category. That's quite scary. Especially when he reaffirms the non-human biologic and trying to pull you away from thinking outer space and aliens. Think, think more grounded.
More ground and you, you know me, I'm later on, we're gonna talk about it, but that brings me back into like the angel demon theories or more spiritual stuff, right? We're talking about other dimensions, other things like that. What else could be non-human, but also from here?
I mean, yeah, angels, demons. It fits. Fits like a glove.
It does.
And they're again connected in religious paintings and, and such like that. So medieval times, so hand in hand, chariots of fire. Mister, I hope, I haven't said this in a while. I hope I'm pronouncing his name right. Mr. Ogles, Mr. Ogles.
Mr. Ogles?
Mr. Ogles.
Mr. Ogles. We're gonna ogle over everything that he says.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I quote, when we think about traditional adversaries, both us towards them and them towards us, we probe their capabilities. We look for weaknesses, we collect that data, that reconnaissance for in the event we need it in the future. Yes or no question, based off your own experience or the data you've been privy to, is there any indication that these UAPs could essentially be collecting reconnaissance information? All three responded with yes. Is it possible that these UAPs would be probing out capabilities? Our capabilities, sorry? Yes or no? All three responded with yes. Is it possible that these UAPs are testing for vulnerabilities in our current systems? All three respond with yes. Do you feel based off of your experience and information that you've been privy to, that these UAPs provide an existential threat to national security of the United States? All three respond with yes. Is there any indication that these UAPs are interested in our nuclear technology and capabilities? All three respond with yes.
Just to write on that, and I've watched lots of UFO documentaries. And that takes me back because this is now before AI and all that stuff. Do you recall? I think we've talked about it maybe briefly on the show before. That one UFO military report where they accidentally set off a nuclear missile and it just immediately gets shut down by a UFO that just zips into the scene, fires a laser at it and it zips off and it's like it was never turned on. You recall that?
I do.
That's what that brought me, that's, that, that made me remember that.
Let, let me ask you this. Do you think there is a chance that that was done as an experiment? Because we have not, I, I don't put much stock in human beings running our country and our, our world leaders. And you're telling me that we haven't launched a nuke since the two that dropped and the, the two atomic bombs, uh, I just feel like someone would have done something stupid.
Right.
Something would have happened, but.
There's a need for maybe some kind of spiritual or alien intervention there.
Yeah. So it makes me wonder, did someone authorize a test? And they did something and like by, by gee, it worked. Like they came down and divine intervention, like who knows? So yes, in closing, Mr. Burchett asks, and I quote, Mr. Gruj, do you have any personal knowledge of someone who's possibly been injured working on legacy UAP reverse engineering? His response, yes. So it just goes hand in hand with what we talked about earlier.
Yep. That takes me right back with someone melted or whatever, like Ark of the Covenant style was somebody like firing a weapon, like who knows? But right there, legacy UAP reverse engineering. They're reverse engineering an unidentified aerial phenomenon, a craft of some kind. That is one of the biggest reveals of truth from this Congress as well as the non-human biologic. So there's two things to take away from this entire thing. They're in possession of craft and there are non-human pilots of some kind involved in all this. Now that's very affirming to us on our show for a lot of the stuff that we believe in. It doesn't outright confirm any particular theory. It doesn't deny that maybe there's hoaxes still because they could be coaxing us with this, but that's a killer sentence to kind of leave at the end there.
It really, really is. It's scary to comprehend.
Yes, it, it really is. And so if you don't have any other thoughts on that, I'll let you add to that if you do. Since this Congress has passed. And I know that our phones and everything around us are just so good at creating personalized feeds. Especially now in Canada where it's like, hey, guess what? We don't get news from outside of Canada anymore on any of our official platforms. That part sucks. But browsing things like TikTok or Twitter or whatever. Okay, my For You pages have a lot of UFO stuff right now. You've been sending me things. I've been sending you things. We've been talking about random things. It's gonna show up in my feed just from my phone being in do not disturb next to me anyways. But since this Congress has ended and we've been talking about these notes, there's been so much crazy stuff that's just going viral. Some of it maybe isn't necessarily related to aliens directly. But think of that crazy airplane lady. You know the one I'm talking about?
I know exactly the one you're talking about.
So her name is Tiffany Gomez. She's a part of a marketing firm, uppercut marketing. And they've served Microsoft and Xbox primarily, some of their biggest brands that they helped market. Now there's a lot of conspiracies involving that video. Obviously it went viral because she's saying she's on an airplane. She's going, that person's not real. She's freaking out. She seems genuinely concerned and everyone was really truly believing it. And then you can unpack that and you can add more conspiracies into this viral video where you look at her hand symbols and she's doing the two fingers up, two fingers down for a long portion of the video and it's that is a questionable questionable hand symbol that is very satanic. It's used in a lot of religious paintings and imagery. There's even paintings of Jesus doing it as well because it's supposed to be, well, obviously now it's corrupted of Satanist churches and stuff like that. Pictures of goat demon Lucifer, all that kind of stuff. But she's doing that hand symbol and it's like, why is she doing that hand symbol? If she's genuinely scared of something that's maybe demonic or alien. Is this perhaps a marketing thing? Is this perhaps a distraction that she did this in the first place? Well, two days ago, from our time, it's currently, we're recording this.
August fifteenth.
What day? August fifteenth. Two days ago, so August thirteenth. She or a look-alike posted an apology video where she admits to being the crazy plane lady, Tiffany Gomez. And she's, she's apologizing for it. She's apologizing for the entire incident. She looked like a fool doing that. Why would you publish an apology video? Was this a viral tactic? Was this a marketing thing? Were you told to apologize for it and downplay it as not being a real event? Cause it was a real event? There's so many unanswered questions in this. That's just one of the random crazy things that's happened since this Congress. And I'm gonna move on to some more, but do you have any thoughts on that, Taylor?
I really didn't know what to make of that when it happened. I was looking into several different people dissecting it and yeah, conspiracies galore. And it's so hard to siphon through and find what the real truth is because everyone has a version of that. So I really just kind of backed off from it. Just knowing in the back of my mind that something was off, but I was accepting that I probably would never understand what exactly. But it is weird that she put out an apology video. I guess when you become a huge internet meme, you're going to maybe come to terms and do something about it. Maybe a company, like, I don't know. It's, it's very convoluted and mysterious all at the same time.
And you just happen to be part of a marketing firm too. So it feels like some kind of a distraction to me. I don't know. It could be something real. And then you sent me this one. It was the Peru aliens. There is a lot of stuff going on there. It was like, hey, what's going on in Peru right now? Why are there's reports of aliens landing? And we have these seven foot tall aliens, some saying they resemble the Green Goblin or tall gray aliens in silver spacesuits with like bug-like eyes, huge like black eyes, apparently ripping off faces. Now, the one, the one photo that was in the majority of news articles for this was actually a photograph of a man whose face was ripped off and eaten by piranhas. They pulled his body out of the river from two months previous. Now that could have just been a relevant photo that was posted for it. It could have been part of a hoax for it. But what a weird event to occur where you have these people reporting aliens literally landing in their backyards and then attacking people. Such a random thing to happen. But of course, people are gonna have all kinds of stories and there could be things happening after this Congress stuff is now out, right? What what better time for us to lose access to outside news? Then after Congress reveals aliens.
Horrible. And the outside news test is just that it's a test. The law has not come into effect yet, but Facebook and Instagram have dropped the hammer down hard on that with Google to follow suit in January twenty twenty four.
Well, yeah, that's exactly it. And who knows where it's really coming from. It's the Canadian government has to approve news or it's these other giant firms like Google and Facebook are saying, no, you gotta pay some kind of a rental fee to have this stuff. It's weird. There's so much stuff involved with that. But so moving on, this Peru thing's happening. This crazy airplane lady thing's happening. We have all these fires happening around the world, Hawaii right now. And so the lady on the plane is doing the satanic hand symbols, right? You have these reverse engineered UAP things that are burning people, melting them potentially, yet they're getting harmed when they touch it, Ark of the Covenant style. In Hawaii. Now, this is another conspiracy where we have maybe some kind of government controlled technology that they're just lighting fires with. Or it's aliens starting fires or it's something starting fires, something spiritual, something's happening. But people are recording these videos now of these instant flashes of like a laser beam coming out of the sky and just lighting things on fire, blowing things up. Have you seen those, Taylor?
Well, I I feel like I heard something in regards to that. I also heard that in the clouds of like smoke, not high up in the sky, but just like above ground level, there's flashes of light in the smoke, but people attribute it to being transformers with the power grids not being shut off properly. And so electricity just like bursting inside this, the fire smoke. But what you say sounds like it's much more upper like atmosphere in the sky.
Upper atmosphere stuff, like when you had paintings from the medieval days of the Black Death or whatever, and you have all these, they could paint clouds, why did they paint spheres in the sky, like an alien invasion, right? So in Hawaii, you have these laser beam videos that people are publishing where it's just, hey, look, I'm on my back porch and there's like a streak of lightning, but it's weight who streaked to be lightning and it's coming down at a weird angle and it leaves an explosion and then there's fire. Is this a government weapon? Is this aliens? What's starting this fire? Why is it that in Maui Lahaina, the only building completely spared that was not burnt down was Lahaina Church? Even the grass is still green. It's perfectly cut in a square around all of the disaster and wreckage. It was posted on the news as well. I see you're looking it up right now, Taylor.
I have, I need to see this.
So Maui Lahaina Church spared by fire. If you Google that, you'll find it. You'll see videos on the news feeds and stuff like that from like global news. They're talking about it. They show it. It is immaculate. It is a miracle that the people around there are saying, oh, our church was spared. It's a sign we're gonna rebuild, right?
This is incredible.
Now, unless it was set up that way, that's a really crazy sign that the church got spared. We we also have videos of just the opposite of these cities and towns that are perfectly fine, but there's a church there or something that's opening up to something new, something not biblical and just being instantly targeted by a laser beam and burnt down. So you've got both these churches that are being spared and you've got ones that are being burnt down happening. You've got crazy airplane lady with the satanic hand gestures. You've got aliens landing, maybe ripping people's faces off, or it's all one big hoax and it's just a mess of everything because everyone's taking advantage of the crazy topics in the world right now. They can get away with whatever they want. They can say whatever they want to do and make it look real. Now, have you seen those videos of politicians and other people just randomly freezing like they're shutting down?
Yes, that I have seen.
Why is that happening now since this Congress, you feel? Wasn't happening before. Now they're just in the middle of their speeches up against the microphone and they freeze. And yeah, a lot of it's older folk, but there's more. I was scrolling through TikTok earlier and there's more videos of people just shutting down and freezing. There's a celebrity that someone's taking a selfie with and he's doing little pose and they take the picture and he's got his arm around them and he won't let go and he's frozen. And they're like, okay, you can stop now. That's weird. That's creepy. You can stop now. And uncomfortable silence and a comfortable amount of time passes. And then just, oh, oh, what? And super confused and just walks away like, what? Why are people freezing? So I'm kind of just leading into this as my talking point for you, Taylor. Is this information coming down purposefully in such a way to set us up for a deception? To distract us from something deeper? Or is all of this other stuff that's happening right now, the distraction from what Congress told us?
Oh, we're turning into conspiracy clues right now. Like
Right?
This is such a repeated topic that go, it comes across my my mind so very often because you have this case for an alien invasion or something that's gonna come. That's like a, like you said, a great deceptive stunt that's gonna be pulled.
Like a project blue beam kind of a thing where, oh, the government's gonna fake an alien invasion. Or is it that the government's revealing all of this stuff so that the real alien invasion, we think, happening is fake? But it's actually a real one.
It's hard to say. I mean, if a real alien invasion were to happen, I think people would just be kind of like pissed off like, whoa, what's going on? And people might get rowdy and do this and that. But I mean, if you put the idea of aliens in people's heads in advance, then I think you somewhat get a an upper edge on people because it allows you to be their reprieve. You've been putting information out to the public about aliens for a while. And so when aliens do arrive, what are people gonna do? They're gonna go to the people that have been putting the information out.
They're gonna trust their government for it.
Exactly, exactly.
Or do you think we're being double distracted? Oh, don't pay attention to the aliens. We have other things going on. But in actuality, it's to make the alien news look even more believable. So we don't find out some other real hidden truth that you and I haven't even touched on yet.
It's so difficult to to formulate a po- possible notion on that. Like it's just, where does the deception stop? How many truths are being bended into manipulated, diverted tactics? At the end of the day, I just think it's, it's so sad that people are suffering. And I hope to God that there is no sinister mind behind some of these massive sufferings put onto people these days. It's just, it's very painful to think about, but I don't, I hope to God, but I don't put that much faith in these people because there are bad people out there. And the more that you and I look into these things, the more I realize that there are really bad people and these bad people are not there to support those that are experiencing the unknown, the mysterious and the very scary realities out there, whether that's EFO, alien, Bigfoot, Dogman, anything that we talk about. And these bad people have put themselves in great positions of power and people are suffering for it. And whether or not that's just more diversions upon diversions, just to kind of keep people in their place, I don't know, but I really do hope that we have a light at the end of the tunnel.
I mean, I have my faith in God and I'm open-minded to all possible theories until proven true about these Congress reveals aliens, angels, demons, whatever it could be. I currently believe there's a strong chance that that's what these aliens are. And that there's inner workings with the government and it's all like some kind of demonic things. I feel like that just ties it into so much history. But my thought in all of this, because through through all this crazy stuff that's happening, as is always with these topics, there's a revival in people that go, oh, it's the end times and they're holding up their signs and they're fear mongering, trying to get you to turn into a Christian, which is the wrong way to do it. I truly think that's the wrong way to do it is to fear monger it. But can you imagine if the rapture was to happen soon? Because no one knows. If you're a Christian, no one knows the time or place for it. If you're not a Christian, you don't even believe it's gonna happen. But if if there was a rapture, could it be disguised to the public? If the government said it was a UFO abduction or invasion? If the signs for the end times are truly happening and the government goes, it's gonna happen. You have rivers and stuff in Russia that are blood red around the world. Other rivers are drying up. There's all these other signs that are supposedly happening. And on a minuscule scale, I truly don't believe that the proper end signs times are happening right now. There are things happening that you could allude to Revelation verses, but I'm not in that boat yet. I could be wrong. But what better way to cover that up?
Cover it up or cause it. How do you know that these sinister people in the positions of power are not expediting or trying to create these things and make it happen, like do these sinister things? I mean, it's just such a such a convoluted scenario in what you had mentioned, if this was absolutely just around the corner, I would be well, damn.
Do you think that's them poking the bear to see if it attacks? You know, they're gonna launch that nuclear missile and hope there's some kind of divine intervention? Oh, let's cause the end times and see if this divine intervention happens so we can prove it. So we can find out what's really true or what's not true.
I think it's definitely within human nature to probe a little bit and garner a reaction out of something. I don't want to say that's necessarily like the scientific community like rallying forward, like let's get, let's, you know, let's cause the rapture and see what we can have come out of this.
You could also do exactly the same thing by saying you want to disprove it by creating all of these signs for the end times. Yeah, see, nothing's happening. So now you have a scientific community contributing to that. You're having all these people come out, do their fear mongering and sign waving, saying that the end times are here. So you can make them look bad. So you can prove your side of the theory. Because it goes both ways. And that's the difficult part of this because obviously you have people that are they have their beliefs. I have my beliefs. There's people with their beliefs. And you can't just choose one because it's been proven correct. You have to do the research for yourself. You have to go back to everything for yourself and see is this reliable information and do I choose to believe in it?
Well, that's how you put that. That's great. Great, actually segue because Fravor from the hearing, he puts it out that and I'm butchering it. I should have written this down. I apologize, but stick to the facts and stick to what you know. Don't try to emphasize and don't try to just remember just when these things happen. Write, write these things down, write the information down. Don't go, oh, it was this big. It was the size of two football fields, but just stick to those facts because with that information that's pooled together, we're gonna get proper answers. And I mean, to your point, yes, everyone has their own different beliefs and it makes it very, very difficult. And I think I stand on a position, a stance where I do believe that different created ah, I don't want to say religions, but different created beliefs or different, different teachings, different followings that have formed all have their place together, I would say. And I think that I, if I've got to go to Walmart, I could take a left or I could take a right, but I'm gonna get there no matter what. And I think that that's a very interesting way to look at it with so many of these different things. Uh, if that makes sense.
I understand that point of view. I think it's kind of like a you're looking at a giant tree that has many different branches, but they all come to the same root. I look at it as there's a tree that has many offshoots of a similar concept that stem from that root, but really the strongest branch to stay on is the root.
That's totally justified too. And I I think if you were to pursue that, you could easily see where that initial root has just been like liquidated and changed and turned into so many different things nowadays. Like I would love to just be able to time travel and go back to humanity back in the day and just see what like how early things were, how raw and how like the start of things, just to kind of see where things change. It's like playing that game, uh, what do you call it? Like headphone or ear or whatever, like you whisper something in someone's ear and it goes around the circle. It comes back and it's just totally changed to something else. I imagine that a lot of human history is like that, especially with the aliens and UFOs and that sort of stuff, but I digress.
That's why the most reliable stuff you can find is stuff, again, history that's written down and has multiple eyewitness encounters.
And stuff on crypto.
We have our open-minded theories and my very favorited topics, even though I say I'm open-minded, but I I really am. It's just, I pick my favorites. That's true.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, I like to be open-minded with many things and you said it. You 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 pick certain things, you pick and choose. I know I certainly do. I I when it comes to cryptids, I'm picking Bigfoot. It's kind of like to go to. So yeah, I mean, I don't have anything else. Do you have anything else you want to add?
That's all from me. Taylor, do you want to take us away?
Yeah. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for tuning into this part two. This is a good discussion. You can find us, cryptoclues.ca is our website. Cryptoclues@gmail.com if you want to reach out, say hi, our social media channels, Twitter, YouTube and Facebook. Uh, we have some great episodes in the works, uh, hopefully an interview coming up soon, but we'll keep that on the down low. Yeah, until next time. Thank you, Ruben. And we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Taylor. Bye bye.